I call the business meeting, or I'm sorry. Yes, I call this business meeting of April 20th, 2022 to order. Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Basine?
Here.
Hampton?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Ralston?
Here.
Martin?
Present. Ms. Kamson will not be joining us this evening and Dr. Gabriel will be attending. She'll be tardy. Okay, can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, move that we enter in a closed executive session?
Can I get a second?
A second.
You, Ms. Tanner?
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the City of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A, one of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the specific personnel on today's regular personnel agenda and specific candidates for appointment for the board's special education advisory committee, school health advisory committee, career and technical advisory committee, and gifted education advisory committee. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students and Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A2 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are specific students on today's regular student support agenda and then consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where discussion in open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating or litigating posture and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by the counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsections A and B of this motion and policies concerning the public's participation at board meetings and the restriction of firearms on real property other than schools when used by the school board. Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Get a motion to come out of closed session, please.
Madam Chair, move that we certify the executive closed session.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
A resolution certifying executive meeting of the school board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the City of Norfolk, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore it be resolved that the school board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the City of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. Ms. Tanner, or first, sorry. Okay, I call the business meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, please, please call the roll.
Basine?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel? Jordan?
Here.
Ralston?
Here.
Martin?
Here. Okay, before we begin, I'd like to encourage everyone who's here for public comment to look at the, right next to the sign up book, there are, our policy is there just so that it's clear on what the expectations are for public comment. This is not a new policy, it's, but I just want to make sure that we're communicating ahead of time. Okay, Ms. Tanner, please, let's see. Next is, I need a motion for the adoption of the business agenda.
Madam Chair, move that we adopt the business agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
I would like to ask that the minutes, both minutes and the personnel docket be voted on separately.
Okay, that's, anyone else? Does anyone oppose to that suggestion?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we will... Minutes, okay, so 4.09 will become 5.04.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
We also deferred 4.08, 4.07, school board advisory committee recommendations, so just want to make sure that's removed.
Yes, so Ms. Tanner, we're removing 4.07? So we're gonna save this for our May meeting?
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other changes?
Personnel?
5.06.
Personnel?
5.06. Personnel docket is going to come with 5.06.
So this printed version has... Are we pulling personnel? The 4.01? Opposition discussion?
It's gonna be 5.04 then.
Personnel, 5.01 and minutes 5.02.
5.04 I have as the minutes.
So then 5.05 would be personnel docket.
We just pulled the school board advisory committee recommendations. So is there, I didn't hear anything about personnel.
Yes, Ms. Basine asked to have the personnel.
You also said personnel, okay. Is anyone in opposition to that? Okay, so then personnel goes from 4.01 to 5.05. Okay, anything else? All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the question. Just one second.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. All right, so up next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Restogee, hello, come on over, you can have a seat at the end of the dais. And whenever you're ready, we'd like for you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Perfect timing. Please stand.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Tanner, do we have our student performance here this evening?
They're here. Just one second, just one second. Glad you all made it. Madam Chair, Teens with a Purpose, under the direction of Deirdre Love, our first, they're going to provide our student performances. Our first poetry reading is by Daquan Garnett, who will read "America I Wish," followed by Ayanna Askew with "Invisible Freedom." And after Ayanna, there's going to be Obalisi? Olubisi Mead, who will read "Little Girl, Little Girl," and these students are from Bogertie Washington High School. So first, let's go ahead and welcome Garnett. Mr. Garnett. We go to the podium.
Go ahead to the...
Please go to the podium when it's your turn.
And speak into the microphone so we can all hear you. Whenever you're ready.
America, I wish you could help me. We could live in a big white house in a quiet private neighborhood where my family has money. Elijah could drive a old limbo. I could slide around, jump, and fly a kite. I could just be myself. I could sleep every night. No gunshot noises. It would just be quiet and write to T W P every day. America, I wish you care about me.
Askew?
I was gonna say, could I just ask a couple questions? Do you mind answering a couple questions? Just quick. Yes, you. Beautiful poem. Can you tell us how you, why you chose to, chose that poem to share with us this evening?
I chose this poem because, because of America and I decided I wanted to write about it.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Because I decided I just wanted to write about America.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else you want to share with us about writing the poem and what inspired you?
"Deirdre Love" actually inspired me though.
Perfect answer. Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
Ms. Askew, and if you need to raise the podium up, you can, there's a button on the side to raise it up or down.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Today I will be performing an original poem that I wrote. It's entitled "Invisible Freedom," and it's about Juneteenth. I once read that hope is the thing with feathers. Its resilience is able to weather life storms, the waves that form and come crashing on African shores, sweeping us away into an ocean of sorrows created by the salty tears of our ancestors, by the incessant reign of the white man reigning supreme. But somehow, instead of drowning, we treaded on their hopes and their dreams as they journeyed to America. Their crowns of royalty became crowns of thorns, their broken backs became America's backbone. Taken from their home and thrown into bondage was Comay. Eighteen years old, fifty-nine inches, arrived in eighteen nineteen on the slave ship Juanita. Coase, a little girl only twenty-four inches tall, a little baby still learning to crawl. History was not written in stone, which is why the gravestones were often unmarked. It was written in the scars of bodies used as whipping posts, found in the blood shed on American soil. They tried to wipe out our history, but the truth will always bleed through. They can't erase pain because it was never written in pencil. But not only must we remember the pain, we must remember the strength. We must remember the thing with feathers that reminds us that after a storm comes a calm. After a rainy day, the sun will peep through the clouds shedding light on our future. Hope became an eternal flame sparked by the heartfelt freedom song sung despite captivity, sparked by June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when Texas ended slavery and all enslaved people were free, sparked by the shouts of jubilee echoing across the United States, sparked by Phyllis Wheatley's words setting the stage for me to walk on. But like Minister Louis Farrakhan said, emancipation is freeing a bird into America's cage, but hope is the explanation for why the caged bird still sings, why the grass can push its way through the concrete, why the blues was born through the bellies of sadness, and why I, a black girl, can live in the world freer than they could ever imagine. I once read that hope is the thing with feathers that reminds us that after a, oh shoot, I once read that hope is the thing with feathers that is able to weather life storms. So on this Juneteenth, look down and see that we stand on the wings of phoenixes, and even in the midst of our jubilee, let's be grounded in the roots of history to remind us that, to be bestowed, oh shoot.
You're doing great. You're doing great. Just keep going.
Okay, I'm sorry, everybody. I'm lowly nervous.
Take your time.
Okay, but to remind us that, okay, I once read that hope is the thing with feathers that reminds us, gosh, I once read that hope is the thing with feathers that is able to weather life storms. So on this Juneteenth, look down and see that we stand on the wings of phoenixes, and even in the midst of our jubilee, let's be grounded in the roots of history and not wait for freedom to be bestowed, but rather to bestow upon ourselves true freedom of our mind, spirit, and body. Thank you.
Bee, you can come forward.
Hello.
Hello.
So I wrote my poem as a dedication to me, the younger me, and all the things I wish I could tell myself before I grew up to be the person I am today. Little girl, little girl, hold on to the little things. That's all you have left. Love everything while you still can, because the world is going to take and take till you have nothing left to give. Little girl, little girl, the pain you're going through, I know it seems like a lot, like so much is happening. Believe me, I've been there, that place where everything seems still, and that your whole life is shattering before your very eyes. But I promise, I promise, it gets better. Little girl, little girl, don't you worry. Life is so much more precious than it seems. Remember to love yourself. Remember that I love you, that people love you. Paint with your beauty and your wisdom, because the world is your canvas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Next we have Elijah Pinto of Norview High School, who will read "Someone Special," followed by Jelandis Moore of Granby High School, who will read "To My Brothers and Sisters Separated by Slavery." Elijah?
I dedicated this poem to someone who saved me at my darkest point of my life. To my special someone, I am here for you. Even though I did abandon you, I am still here. Your smile is as bright as the brightest stars. Your face is as beautiful as any others. I adore you. You have helped me see that there is more to life than this darkness. You gave me something that I lost, hope and faith. You have helped me in so many ways that I can't explain, but I am going to repay you. To my special someone, hang in there. Don't fall into society's ways. You are amazing, beautiful, smart, and a sweetheart. You gave me hope, hope. You have an amazing personality, and you have helped me see the true meaning of everything. To my special someone, you have given me the strength to finally get me back on my feet. You put my broken heart back together, and when I am finally ready, I will give you my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
How everybody doing today?
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Split apart like the Red Sea. Humanity divided by power and greed. Black people have to give up their seats at the tables so others can eat. To my sisters and my brothers separated by slavery. We was always meant to be united. It's time to grow up and stop fighting. Love conquers all.
Martin and board members, let's give our Teens with a Purpose another round of applause, under the direction of Deirdre Love.
Ms. Tanner, if you don't mind, Ms. Deirdre Love, would you mind coming up and just briefly telling everybody about Teens with a Purpose?
Thank you for this opportunity. Teens with a Purpose is a creative youth development organization, born and raised right here in Norfolk, Virginia. We've been around for twenty-six years, and we cultivate youth voice. We know that everybody has a voice, everyone has a story to tell, and we use arts as that vehicle to help young people transform their lives, to empower their peers, and just to stand up for social justice and things that they want to change in this world. So it's teens creatively cultivating the next generation of leaders is what Teens with a Purpose strives to do and be.
Thank you.
Thanks for this opportunity.
Good for your service to our community. I want to thank all of the teens over here that participated tonight. I just want to thank you for being so brave and open and sharing your poetry and your craft with us. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our superintendent's report, so go ahead. Dr. Birdsong?
Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Mr. Clanton, School Board Vice Chair, members of our community and administration. Today we have an exciting video to share with you. Each month we like to highlight all of the exciting accomplishments of our students within Norfolk Public Schools, and so I think you'll share in my excitement after seeing the video. So roll the video, please.
Enthusiastic students in grades three through seven participated in the Eighteenth Annual District Science Fair on the campus of Old Dominion University. Judges spoke individually with students in third through fifth grades about their projects, while sixth and seventh graders gave formal presentations to several judges at once on a wide variety of topics.
It's about canister bottle rockets and pressure building up with Alka-Seltzer tablets. They had asked me, what do they think that I could change about my project? What did I exactly do for my project? And they asked me about all the artwork on my project. I like doing science fairs because I get to do experiments and stuff. They're a lot of fun.
It was the effect of radio wave's strength as it goes through a wall. It went pretty good. I was super nervous, but, and I saw kind of confused faces, but in the end, they, I think they comprehended it. I think they were like, what is this kid talking about? But like, it's cool that he's doing new things and participating.
This partnership with ODU not only enabled students to have a science fair at a university for the first time, but it also gave them the opportunity to get an early look at life in college.
We are talking about not just science fair and their presentations, but also opportunities to begin to think about college. So we're telling our third, our fourth graders, fifth and up through middle school, that now is the time to begin to think about opportunities for college. And of course, we would love for them to major in science.
The elementary and middle school battle of the books returned to the Academy of Discovery at Lakewood for the first time since 2019. During three days of matches, students answered dozens of questions, and everyone appreciated the opportunity to come together yet again to compete and celebrate reading.
It went wonderfully. We had teams that were excited, that had prepared, and that were just ready to enjoy reading and talking about their books and having a good time answering questions about what they have read.
Oh, it feels so good to be back. It was so good to see the kids, and they were so excited about the books, and they gave us a lot of great feedback on which books they really liked and which ones maybe weren't their favorites. But I think the kids all had a great time. The coaches had fun. They were a little competitive too, so it was a good battle of the books this year.
After numerous rounds of questions that challenged students' knowledge of several books, three champions were crowned. Lake Taylor School took home the middle school title, while Granby Elementary won the fourth grade contest, and Larchmont Elementary was victorious in the fifth grade battle.
At first I was very nervous because like, the first part of the, at the first and second round, we were just getting steamrolled. But then, I reckon we only won by about five or ten points. It feels really good.
I expected it to be, like, the questions to be harder, but they're pretty easy for the most part. Actually reading through all of the books was the hardest part, and making questions, and like staying up, studying them, stuff like that. Well, this is actually my first time doing it, so I thought it was pretty fun.
It's amazing. Everyone on my team worked so hard for this, and I'm really proud of us. I love competing. I'm a very competitive person, and Battle of the Books, it takes my two favorite things, reading and competing, and it was just amazing to do this.
For the first time since the start of the pandemic, a master teaching artist from the Wolf Trap Institute for Early Learning for the Arts was able to spend a week with students at Coleman Place Elementary. In the pre-K4 class, she used music, movement, and various types of sounds to keep these preschoolers engaged while they learned the story of the paperback princess.
They love it. Yeah, the students really love it, and they're really excited for her to come. And they really love singing and dancing and everything that goes along with the arts. I think that this is a great program that we have access to. They love music, and obviously my background is not music, so it's good when she can come in because she teaches me a lot, things that I can do with them.
Music fills the whole brain. Children tend to be very intently focused on, on what we're doing, so, so we can tell the story without having to draw children back to their spaces. This is the first time we've been able to be back with children in person, and it is just such a joy to be in the same room, engaging, inviting children to participate directly, to come up in front and help me to be leaders in their group. It's just, it's so powerful. There's so much social, emotional learning when we can be together this way.
During spring break, school nutrition welcomed parents and students to Crossroads School, where they debuted their brand-new food truck. The truck, which was made possible through a grant by No Kid Hungry, has a fully working kitchen and served made-to-order chicken wings for its opening. Over 200 free meals were handed out to children ages eighteen and under, and there were also giveaways, along with a mobile produce stand on site.
We are so thrilled after waiting so long to be able to debut our food truck on this beautiful day in support of the community on spring break. We have had just some really grateful, wonderful stories about people who really need food assistance during this time, and us being here is making the difference for them this week. So we are humbled and proud to have this opportunity.
Um, it's new. It's something different. Nothing I've ever experienced before. It's surprising and it's very helpful. Some people have lost their jobs and some places have closed. We don't have all those funds, so I mean, it's helpful. It's just, like today, we, we had no food in the house, so we came out to get food.
I like how they, like, are so nice over here, and I like how they have food cups. Overall, I think this is a pretty good place to eat food. They did really good in my book.
You know what? This is so awesome. I really love it. I'm so thankful that they took the time to think about our community. I'm so glad that they decided to put it here. It's accessible, and the children, as you can look around and see, they're loving it. I'm pleased.
The Maury Commodores ended their season with a heartbreaking loss in the state title game, but Coach Brandon Plummer gave his team high praise.
I poured so much into these guys. I mean, everything that I had. And, you know, that's why I had to tell them, you know, there's no reason for y'all to hang y'all heads at all. there's no reason for y'all to hang y'all heads at all. You know, you guys gave me everything y'all got throughout this whole entire season. This was my best season, even though, you know, previous years I won the state championship. But this was my best season overall, record-wise. I think we finished up 23-3. You know, so these guys, you know, they did everything I could ask for.
Middle schools concluded its Winter 2 sports season. Congrats to Lakewood for winning first place in the forensics competition. Eight teams took part in the cheer competition, and in the end, Lakewood went home the winners. Boy soccer was a tight affair between Northside and Lakewood. A second-half goal was the difference, as the stars of Northside were crowned champions, winning 1-0. On the hardwood, Lakewood finished with an undefeated season, beating Norview in the girls' final, while Roughner's Boys also finished the season unbeaten, as they also defeated Norview for the championship. Congrats to all.
So, Madam Chair Martin, before we transition to the clerk's report, I want to thank everyone for wearing purple today. We were all encouraged to purple up today in support of our military-connected students and families. So thank you for doing so. And on Friday, we will be wearing red in support of our children with disabilities. And we have our Little Feet meet at Old Dominion University. I believe it starts at 11 o'clock. So if you're able to come out and support this event, please do so. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. It's so wonderful to see people in our classroom helping our children from our stakeholders and the community engagement. It's just, we're getting back to that pre-pandemic.
Volunteers back into our schools. So we're excited about that as well.
You can really see how the children were enjoying it, too. So thank you for that. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner, with your clerk's report.
Sure. Madam Chair, clerk's report notes the following observances for April. A month of the Military Child, and then Child Abuse Prevention Month, School Library Month, and today is Purple Up Day. You may see some individuals here tonight wearing purple. Individuals were encouraged to wear purple today in recognition of today. National Student Leadership Week is April 24 through the 30th. And Public School Volunteer Week is April 18 through the 22nd. And Administrative Professionals Week is April 21 through the 27th. And the Administrative Professionals Day is April 27th. So let's give everybody a round of applause for that. Now, Madam Chair, we have two special student recognitions this evening in honor of Norfolk Public Schools' 18th Annual District Science Fair. Stephanie Henderson is going to go to the podium right now, who is our secondary science specialist, who's going to introduce our two honored guests this evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the board. I am Stephanie Henderson, the secondary science teacher specialist. I am excited to have this opportunity to share details of the Norfolk Public Schools' 18th Annual District Science Fair. The enthusiasm for and anticipation of this event began during the 2004-05 school year. This event provides our students in grades three through seven the opportunity to demonstrate mastery of scientific concepts through innovative scientific research and investigation. The projects of the 2021-22 Science Fair feature the 21st-century skills required for success as future healthcare providers, astronauts, engineers, mathematicians, and scientists. This year's event, held for the first time on the campus of Old Dominion University, provided opportunities, as Dr. Britton stated, for students to begin thinking about college by touring the campus and also engaging with college admission officers. This evening, I am joined by our top secondary winners. Peyton Maddox, our grade six winner from Southside Stent Academy at Camp Estella, and Nikayla Johnson, our grade seven winner from Lake Taylor School. These two students will provide a brief overview of their project's purpose and findings. Thank you for the opportunity for our students to share.
Thank you. Madam Chair, now we have special certificates for these two honorees for their work. But before we do that, we want to give them an opportunity to share their presentation. So Peyton Maddox, would you like to go to the podium first? And I'll work your presentation for you. We are proud of his project. It was "How Strong Is a Wet Paper Towel When Stacking Pennies on It?" And he said the purpose of this project is for the paper towels and to, is the paper towels observe how many pennies can each paper towel brand hold when wet? All right, well, let's give him a round of applause. We thank him very much. Come forward and get your certificate. Thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate your service. Congratulations. And next, we have Nikayla Johnson, who's going to share her presentation tonight. And the clicker's on the podium, if you'd like to use it.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Nikayla Johnson, and I did a project about how does screen time affect your ability to sleep?
I'll do it for you. Go ahead.
Everybody knows how much we love our technology. There are many things that affect our sleep. Things such as stress, trauma, activities, and the things we love the most, our electronics, are of these contributors. If you're wondering how, it's caused by the emitted blue light, which, if viewed late at night, can disrupt your circadian rhythm. That is the cycle that naturally tells you, your brain, to make melatonin. Melatonin, if you didn't know, is a chemical naturally made by your brain to relax you and eventually put you to sleep. You can also buy it artificially over the counter. Discussing my topic, I am asking the big question that our generation just has to know. Why do our parents tell us not to look at screens late at night? Well, I know I've been told sources such as Time.com explicitly state, and I quote, "It's become a virtually unchallenged piece of knowledge" that screen time late at night is bad for sleep. Who am I to question? Research done by Stuart Kwan, award winner, Dr. Kathy Goldstein, who is a professor of neurology, where she specializes in sleep disorders and the circadian rhythm. I am no challenger of her knowledgeable opinion. I am but a test subject. In my experiment, I will record how many hours I was on my electronics and record how well I slept to imitate the express process of testing whether or not screen time had an effect on my sleep. If I spend more time subjected to blue light, then I will have less quality hours of sleep. In theory, I will test out if blue light really affects my sleep schedule as an insomniac. This means that if my hypothesis is correct, the light has a negative effect on your sleep, and you may want to wind back on your screen time. However, if my hypothesis is inaccurate, then you can always make your own opinion on it and test it out yourself. Though I still recommend to at least consider, you may cause a sleep disorder or lack of sleep and functioning if you take in blue light with excess. So many credible scientists have already put in the effort to check it out. Data table, date time, how long the subject was exposed to blue light. Monday, January 17, 2022, roughly seven hours, 9:00 p.m. through 4:00 a.m. Tuesday, January 18, 2022, approximately four hours, 9:00 p.m. through 1:00 a.m. Wednesday, January 19, 2022, less than two hours, 9:00 a.m. to 10:45ish p.m. Friday, January 21, 2022, none, 9:00 p.m., and just went to sleep. Results. On Monday, as written in my journal, I barely had any sleep at all, given that I was awake at 6:00 a.m. Even after struggling to get to sleep, I could only sleep off and on. On Tuesday, it was better, although I still had a bit of trouble falling asleep. I could sleep through the night. On Wednesday, I felt more refreshed than any day so far. I had a bit of drowsiness, but that was soon cleared up after breakfast. I used Thursday as a break from experimentation and testing, as shown on the graph. On Friday, the day, I stopped exposing myself to blue light after 9:00 p.m. I slept throughout the night and even had no problem getting sleep, save for my slight headache.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I love that we can all learn something from that experiment.
And congratulations. Give her another round of applause. And that concludes my recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I do want to add something before moving on. In honor of its National Volunteer Week, I want to recognize Norfolk Public Schools student who was, her name is Nayla Rivera Morales. She's a junior at Granby High School. And last night, at the Volunteer Hampton Roads Annual Volunteer Recognition Event, she was presented with the Youth Volunteer Award for her volunteerism at Nauticus. Not only has she volunteered to help with displays, but also to clean up the river and several other activities. And it was just such a wonderful experience to learn about how passionate she is about her work at Nauticus and that she was actually recognized for that. And I was very, very proud to be there. Okay, up next on our agenda, we have citizens' comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Ms. Tanner, how many people do we have?
Madam Chair, we have 14 speakers to call in, email, or sign up to speak this evening.
Okay.
Today's speakers have signed up for the public comment before the start of today's business meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you are employed by the district. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@mps.k12.vu.us. Or comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. Madam Chair, our first speaker for today is Helen Pryor with the EAN, Education Association of Norfolk, followed by Monica Brown, who's an MPS teacher.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, Chair Dr. Martin, and all the members of the school board for the city of Norfolk. And welcome back from spring break. I am Helen Pryor, and I have been proudly employed with Norfolk Public Schools for 15 years. 14 at Roughner, and now at Chesterfield Academy as the Gifted Resource Teacher. I'm also the president of the Education Association of Norfolk, the local affiliate of the Virginia Education Association and the National Education Association, and here to set forward some clarity and some truths. Last week, I was appointed to the State District O Board, which represents the school districts of Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and up through the eastern shore. I also serve on the Elizabeth River Uniserve, which represents the school districts of Norfolk and Chesapeake, and through District N, Portsmouth and South Oak. In this area, we're talking about over 5,000 teachers and staff members just locally. 40,000 within the state. A very large, truly diverse, spectacular group of people. So let's talk about where Norfolk stands in all this. I recently spoke at the Norfolk City Council Budget Hearing. Because I know the numbers. We have 133 Virginia Education Association locals throughout the state, and we stay in touch. Through this, we know that Norfolk does not stand alone with all these issues that the pandemic has forced upon us. Many districts throughout the state have the same issues, and some even worse. I'm proud of us. We've done some amazing things, as evident today. We truly have a hard-working group of teachers and staff. However, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Hampton, Portsmouth, South Oak, they're all providing these very significant raises, up through, in some cases, over 10%. But this is in addition to the significant bumps they have already received in previous years. And then we got our budget, and once again, it's low. And as evident in our pleas to the Norfolk mayor a couple of weeks ago, unfortunately, Norfolk has a reputation of coming in late, providing some of the lowest salaries and lowest raises. And although we do truly appreciate our teacher appreciation bonuses, we would prefer the steps. And I know that would require a huge step of faith. And I hope one day to see that. But this reputation has done us some damage. ODU, Norfolk State, TCC, and other local institutes are all experiencing all-time lows in enrollment. People don't want to become teachers. We're so far behind in our wages. We're so far behind in our steps. We're farther behind from the rest of the state, because I have the numbers to show it. Every city around us is providing more. I asked, the EAN asked, for 10% unencumbered. Do not take percentages off the top for benefits. And year after year, we get on this cycle, and your teachers and classified staff just keep sliding back. Within our 5,000 Tidewater Hampton Roads Union members alone, the largest percentage of them live in the city of Norfolk.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor.
Their children attend school here and vote here. Thank you. Please rethink the process and your budget.
Next, we have Monica Brown with NFT.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Monica Brown, and I'm a 21-year veteran teacher in Norfolk Public Schools. I love my students, their families, and the communities that we service. And it gives me joy to experience all of the amazing things that come along with working for this great system. We know that a great amount of time, money, and effort is being put into new recruits, and rightfully so. We welcome all who share our vision in education. But we must continue to renew and revitalize the teachers and workers who remain loyal year after year. I had a really great speech that I had planned to share today. But I'd rather take a look, I would rather share some information from the meeting that I had this morning with Human Resources. There were a few eye-opening takeaways for me. This morning, I had a meeting with Human Resources to discuss my pay, my step placement, and to gain a better understanding of the operation of the teacher salary scale. There is a 26-page salary and wage document that is on the Norfolk Public Schools website. However, our operation of the teacher salary scale is not listed. It's not posted, and it is not available for all who would like to join or stay in Norfolk Public Schools. Unfortunately, an in-person meeting had to be scheduled because although Norfolk Public Schools has a salary and wages handbook, again, that is 26 pages long, Norfolk intentionally misleads the community by not including their step conversion chart, which is officially known as the operation of teacher's scale salary. This document should be posted. And the salary and wages handbook is extremely important because it explains the steps, matches years of service to the step that you're placed on when you are hired. It has all of the important information that both new hires and current employees should have tangible so that they can map out their career plan and pay and see what the progression of their pay can be for years to come. Unfortunately, Norfolk does not include this form on their website. And on tonight, I want to know why. Why don't we want the public to see our operation scale? Is it because we don't want people to know how far off it is from other systems? Maybe it's because Norfolk wants to show one scale to a certain group of employees and an alternative scale for others. We are left to wonder why Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, Hampton, Chesapeake, and even Newport News has their operation of the salary scale posted, yet Norfolk doesn't. Please, if you're proud of your scale, post it for all to see. We need to see where we are, where we stand, and where we are going to go if we want to stay in Norfolk. Not providing professionals with all of the terms of their employment is dangerous and reckless. Let's fix that and end the shame today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Garman with NFT, followed by Patricia Rubin with NFT. We will only start the timer when you begin to speak at the podium.
As you heard, my name is Melissa Garman. I'm an employee at Granby Elementary School, SPED K-1, resident of Norfolk, 24-year Navy veteran. On March 16, NFT came here en masse to fight for the board to demand a solution for step compression. By the end of that night, it was clear. Our pleas fell on callous, uncaring ears. But that is to be at But that is to be expected. After all, MPS step compression has compounded over the last 12 years. The time it takes for a Norfolk student to go from graduating kindergarten to graduating high school. The numbers of teacher vacancies across the state, part of our nation's great resignation, are critically high. The numbers have grown from 877 vacancies in 2018 to around about 5,000 this school year. That is a 570% increase in four years. Nevertheless, MPS and this board have demonstrated that fixing step compression is not a priority. In fact, the impression is that you'd see fit to focus on new hires and hope for mass retires so that eventually no one is affected by step compression anymore. We want to pretend to empathize while secretly waiting for the problem to go away rather than use American Rescue Funds to get out of the debt MPS is in with its teachers because that's the truth of what it is. Thousands of loyal, dedicated MPS employees have stayed because they, we, love this city and care about its future. But rather than acknowledge and reward those employees, MPS continues cheating employees out of thousands of dollars. Be honest with us. No one has any sense of urgency to fix it. While enter collective bargaining, while you continue to try to gaslight us and each other about how difficult the problem is to fix, we are going to be locked in and pursue collective bargaining like a heat-seeking missile. We have a saying in the Navy, when a missile's inbound, it's called brace for shock. My sisters, my brothers, we're not going to give up this fight. You won't work with us voluntarily, then we will pursue collective bargaining, and we will do everything we can to make it legal and make it binding and make it right. Brace for shock.
Thank you.
Next, we have Patricia Rubin. Is Patricia Rubin here? No? Next, you have Julie Berry with NFT that signed up to speak.
Hi, my name is Julie Berry. How are you? I'm just a teacher, a second-grade teacher, and I've only been a teacher this is my third year. However, I am deeply concerned about the enormous amount of hours a teacher is expected to work outside the classroom and the hours and how it affects her work-life balance and her enthusiasm to remain a teacher in the system. Teachers I've spoken to recently have told me that they spend somewhere between 10 to 25 extra hours per week, weekly, to feel prepared each day. Even if we take the lower number, the 10 hours, that comes out to 400 extra hours of unpaid work, considered volunteer work. The non-binding memo of understanding states that no teacher is expected to work more than 30 hours outside of the classroom. On the flip side, I stopped working outside the classroom several months ago. I refuse to give up my work-life balance and my mental health. However, that leaves me stressed every day because I don't feel as prepared as I should be. This only takes into consideration lesson prep. If we include into that grading, conferences, meetings, professional development, and goals, we can see that a teacher is always stressed because her work-life balance is extremely unbalanced, or she is stressed because she is unprepared. Neither is unsustainable, and teachers leave. We can in no way afford to keep this archaic and frankly abusive system in place. We need to show teachers they are valued, and their mental health and their time and effort matters. Collective bargaining will accomplish this and benefit MPS teachers, employees, and MPS administration. Teachers will know they are valued and their needs are heard. As a result, teacher retention will go up. When teachers leave, the children suffer the consequences, as do their families and the community. MPS also suffers because schools are not adequately staffed. Everyone wins when collective bargaining is brought to the table. I will advocate to vote out any board members who do not support collective bargaining, and I will support candidates who do. As the current MPS climate stands in regard to teacher workload, teacher pay ratio, I will not be back in the fall. There's no, absolutely no profession in the world which is low, which the employees are so low-paid and are expected to work hundreds of hours for free every year. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Next, we have Raketa Robinson with NFT.
You can come on up to the lecture.
Something's being passed out for you all.
Okay. Go ahead and begin speaking when you're ready.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Raketa Robinson, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Richard Bowling Elementary School. I am here once again tonight with my fellow NFT members to advocate for teachers and employees. And tonight, I was inspired by teens with a purpose to stand up for injustices. Tonight, I come to illustrate one of the most discourteous communications that I've ever received from a Norfolk Public School administrator in my 30 years of teaching. As you know, this weekend, people, groups all took time to be with their families, to celebrate many holy days, whether it was Passover, Ramadan, Easter. We know that this was sacred time and should be honored as such. Those of us at Richard Bowling Elementary School are not afforded a true break. On the holiest day of the year, Easter Sunday, I was notified by Ms. Karen Purnell, our Assistant Principal, that my lesson plans for the upcoming school week were not posted and that this was a non-negotiable. Furthermore, that failure to adhere to the district policies have resulted in further disciplinary actions. I cannot begin to articulate the feelings it evoked on my Easter, being robbed of my Easter Sabbath, when after attending church with my family, how it ruined my Easter dinner, Sunday dinner with my family. RBS teachers were not sent this email on Saturday. We were not sent the email on Teacher Work Day on Monday. We were not even afforded a gentle reminder. This email mentions "Good afternoon, Happy Easter." I concluded that it was meant to be received on the consecrated day and time, Easter, no matter how hollow, blessed, and holy that time was to me. This is disrespect at its highest, and frankly, I am sick and tired of it. What will it take to stop this blatant and disrespect and regard of me to be treated fairly? What do I have to do to protect my mental health? I practice self-care. I set healthy boundaries. No matter when this email was received by other teachers, it was received in the spirit it was intended. Faculty is handed down non-negotiables and frequent threats, write-ups by administration, but you continue to trample on workers' freedom without any regard of how it affects us. As NFT, we are continually bringing to your attention that teachers all across the district are feeling some type of way, and it is resulting in many teachers leaving. It is imperative that we retain our highly qualified teachers. I feel disrespected, and without a voice and a seat at the table, we have no choice but to leave. If MPS wants to see full employment, then collective bargaining is a must. If we want to strengthen our community and create opportunities for students, we need to first start with this building block. Collective bargaining would have afforded me the opportunity to share this grievance privately and not air dirty laundry in front of a poor public forum.
Thank you.
Dita Weaver, who signed up with NFT.
What was the name again?
Dita Weaver with NFT, signed up.
Good evening. I'm Dita Weaver, and I work at Lake Tullah High School. I'm a special education teacher there. I also have a daughter in Norfolk Public Schools as well. I come on behalf of myself and the many other teachers working for the District of Norfolk. This is my third year teaching and working for Norfolk Public Schools, and I honestly see it getting progressively worse. I've witnessed so many phenomenal, talented, knowledgeable, dedicated, and passionate teachers leave to pursue other endeavors, retire, trade districts, which is a big one, or just completely change careers going back to school. It is sad to see, honestly, myself and so many others go home exhausted, not having energy for anything else, yet so many of us work multiple jobs. I am a single mom, and I have three jobs myself, including Norfolk Public Schools. What makes matters even worse is that I have obtained a master's degree, which brings me to my next point. Upon being hired with Norfolk Public Schools, I was told that I'd receive a pay stipend for furthering my education. This is also stated within the MPS handbook along with the MOU. I even stated what I would be receiving my master's in at the time. However, after submitting the stipend paperwork along with my transcript of completion, I was told that it couldn't be recognized because it wasn't in an area of education. My degree is in Human Services Counseling, and I'm a special education teacher. Honestly, some days, I counsel more than I teach. So it was very disappointing to receive this news. Although more money won't merely begin to fix the problems the district has to fix, it will at least relieve some of the stress off of their employees who dedicate themselves, their family, and so much of their time to ensure our children are successful. All the best.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kelly Miller with NFT.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to start off by first saying that not only am I a teacher, I'm also a parent. All of my children have either graduated or attend Norfolk Public Schools. And as a teacher, I love the job that I do. I love the children that I work with, and I find it valuable to live and work in the same community. But at the same time, I feel very disrespected by my employer. As I come to work yesterday to find out that teachers who were hired after August 15th are going to be receiving an additional bonus in between $2,500 and $5,000 if they work in a hard-to-fill position, which means that a first-year teacher at my school who teaches on the same grad level that I am is going to be getting an additional $5,000 bonus, putting her significantly higher than me on Step 6. This is someone that we help to mentor and we work with, and you give them additional money so that they don't leave where we sit here and spend our time and energy and have shown that we're committed and we're being ignored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lakweta Mackey with NFT. And I hope I pronounced your name properly. Let me know.
It's okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lakweta Mackey, and I'm the Executive Vice President for the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I'm currently a math specialist at St. Helena and PB Young Elementary School. I have 28 years with only Norfolk Public Schools. I stand before you today to stress to you that we do not agree with the Norfolk Public Schools budget that you pass. The budget does not show that you care about us veteran teachers. The budget leaves out equal pay for teachers and putting teachers on their correct steps. What it does include is another four-year study that is a complete waste of time and money, and that money can be used towards our steps. A study was already done in 2016 under Dr. Melinda Boone. It also includes starting teachers at $49,500 and giving them a bonus of $3,500. That is a smack in the face to us veteran teachers as myself. It's a shame that teachers coming in will make the same or close to the same pay as some veteran teachers, especially when we're the ones that train them. How about give us veteran teachers the bonus to retain us? It also includes $2.5 million for Dr. Birdsong. I believe in planning for the unexpected and for rainy days to come, but it's raining now in MPS. It's been raining for a long time. We want to be placed on our right steps, not in another four years, but now. It's raining in our kindergarten classes. They are holding 20 and 25 students. They need assistance. It's raining now in hard-to-staff schools. Give them back their stipends. It's raining now amongst us reading and math specialists that are working in two schools. Overall, MPS employees are overworked, underpaid, and fed up. We appreciate the bonus, but it's not enough. We want to be put on our right steps. This is one of the main reasons why we need collective bargaining. You were given $113 million from the American Rescue Plan to retain teachers and another $20 million to access. You are trying to spend it on everything else but teachers. Tell me, what's the sense of fixing buildings if you won't have teachers to teach in them? More and more teachers are leaving MPS due to the lack of urgency you are showing us regarding putting us on our steps. By you not putting us on our right steps, it affects our retirement and Social Security. Every year that I am loyal to MPS, I am getting less retirement and less Social Security benefits. As a teacher, we did not go into the profession to be rich. We didn't have that mindset. No, we did not. But we deserve to live and live comfortably. We shouldn't have to stress over paying a bill or putting food on the table. We are tired, we are fed up, and we are overworked. We just want to get paid like all the other neighboring cities. In closing, if you don't remember anything else I said, remember this: equal pay, and we will continue to stay. No equal pay will leave us no choice but to take our talent, skills, and dedication to another district that will pay and appreciate us. So come June, when it's time to sign on the dotted line, show us you care by putting us on our right steps, or you will give many of us no choice but to leave MPS behind. I thank you for your time. And as I take my seat, please look at my shirt. We care, we fight, we show up, and we vote. And we will vote in November because I think something special's coming up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Thomas Calhoun with NFT.
Good evening.
Good evening. I came here tonight to leave you guys with a couple of questions that I've been asking, want to ask again. Over five years ago, this study was completed. It's still around. You still got it. Dr. Melinda Boone was superintendent at the time, and Rodney Jordan was school board chair, and Deandris Billis was Director of Human Resources. Phase 1 started. I remember my sister telling me she had got several steps and was so happy, and next thing you know, Dr. Boone was gone, and so was the study. Why did this stop when Dr. Boone left? That's my first question for you. Why did, what happened? The first phase started. Oh, is it? Why did it stop after Dr. Boone left? Well, looks like you're going to do another one, four more years. So let me see, that's nine years study on the same problem. Nine years for the same problem. I'm glad it didn't take nine years to come up with a COVID vaccine. I'm glad it didn't take nine years to find an Ebola cure. Nine years on the same study? Okay. Really, let me get to the point here. How many years y'all think it's going to take before they all gone? You know, retire? Change careers? You know, change cities? I mean, you don't wait at five? You're going to do four more? How many years you think it's going to take? I mean, do you talk to accountants about this kind of stuff? You know, actuaries? I mean, that's what you're waiting on, right? Really? Y'all don't have no intention on paying them, do you? None. You're not going to bring them up. You just keep wasting and stalling till they all gone, aren't you? You're not going to pay them? Not ever, never. Four more years, what, you're going to do another study? What, three, then two, then one? How many years you think it's going to take before y'all can get rid of all these people? How long? Going to take something else? MIU, MOU won't fix this? We need some collective bargaining. You guys ain't be trusted. MOU won't fix this. We need collective bargaining. We need it now. I can't believe you're doing this. I can't believe you're treating these people like this. Really? Nine years on the study? They came up with a nuclear bomb in less than nine years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Natalie Ferrara with NFT.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Martin, school board members. My name is Natalie Ferrara, and I am a proud educator within Norfolk Public Schools, as well as a proud member of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. Tonight, you have heard from many of my colleagues. We have come before you this evening to again ask you to reconsider the misplacement of NPS pay steps and consider the future of your workforce. Proud. Proud is how I have felt for the past eight years when I have shared with others that I work for Norfolk Public Schools. I have been given opportunities to grow as an educator as well as an individual. No price could ever be set on the experiences Norfolk has given me. However, the time has come in which I am no longer proud to work for an elected body of officials that has no regard for the well-being of its workforce. The school board has approved a 5.8% raise for most teachers that will then be chipped away by a 6% projected increase in health insurance costs. So by choosing to stay in Norfolk, I am not only not receiving a raise, I will also be making less in salary than in previous years. What world do you all live in that those circumstances seem appropriate in comparison to the reality that your employees experience? Each month after taxes, withholdings, deductions, I net approximately $2,400 from Norfolk Public Schools. My rent in the city of Norfolk is $1,400 alone. One bill is roughly 58% of what you all pay me. I am a single female. In what world do you all believe I can thrive in based on what you pay me? It is not yours, at least those of you who work for and live in Norfolk, because effective June 1st, I will be moving back to the city of Chesapeake, where I can afford to live on the salary you all pay me. Instead of a 10-minute commute, I will now have a 35-minute drive to work. How long will I make the commute before I internalize that commuting within Chesapeake would be both time and cost-effective? At least within Chesapeake, I would be hired at my correct step of pay. Despite what your human resource people tell you, I am here to tell you that, in fact, Norfolk teachers do leave this district every single year to go to Virginia Beach and Chesapeake and are placed on the right step. In 2016, you all were informed by Seagull Waters Consulting that it would take approximately $25 million to address the pay step compression issues this district faces. It is now six years later, and almost nothing has changed. Yet our leaders sitting here in this room can't recall this information because they weren't involved. How can problems be addressed when there is absolutely no accountability within this school division's leadership? Own up to it, address it, fix it. The labor upon which this district depends has reached its limit. We will no longer accept failed promises. A collective bargaining agreement must be negotiated between this school district and its employees in order to secure the pay we are entitled to. I ask you all to consider working with us. November is coming, and over half of you are up for reelection.
Thank you. Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers for this evening, and we adjusted the list to 10 speakers, so some signed up on the, uh, signed up twice by mistake.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Okay. Um, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second, thank you. Ms. Tanner, please call the question.
Bassin.
Aye.
Clanton.
Aye.
Gabriel.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Ralston.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye. Okay, um, we have item 5.01, our financial report with Mr. Jenkins. Good evening.
Good me, good evening. Evening Chairman, uh, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board. This evening, I'll review the monthly financial statement for March. The March report covers nine months for the fiscal year that started July 1st. During the period, we collected nearly $240 million of general fund revenue, which represents 67.7% of the $355 million operating budget. Collections during the same period of the two previous years hovered between 67.1% and 67.4%, so this year's are just a bit above the previous years. Page 3 includes two graphs, um, one for the revenue, one for revenue and the other for spending for each month of the year. The graphs present monthly revenue and commitments for the current and two previous years. The monthly budget trend is in the green background. On page 4 of the highlights, we provide a graph of revenue and spending. By the end of March, we had spent or encumbered $226.6 million, or 64% of our budget. Again, revenue was $240 million through March. During the previous two years, spending for the same period ranged between 64.5% and 65.1%. Our spending rate this year is similar to that of previous years. More detailed information is available for you, starting on page 5. During month, excuse me, during March, we recorded four budget transfers exceeding $50,000, which are listed on page 15. Two transfers were for school facilities, and transfers were made for learning support and technology services. The quarterly grant status report starts on page 16. Uh, we have approximately $270 million of grant-funded projects in place. We've spent or encumbered $119 million, or 44% of the grant awards. Some projects have recently expired, and our staff is working to collect funds and close these grants. Other projects have grant expiration dates as late as December of 2024. The federal coronavirus projects appear on page 16. You also have a separate report included in your, uh, in your agenda that lists grants and donations that were received between January 1st and March 31. During the quarter, schools received $75,202 in cash and merchandise. School Board Policy KH requires that you officially accept all gifts. Dr. Martin, that concludes my comments. If you or the board members have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Jenkins, on page 15, where, uh, the budget transfers are described, um, can you, can you clarify, so contract services, the, and this is the second group, uh, 95, 954?
Okay, sure. Be happy to.
Um, yeah, if you can explain, uh...
Right. There was, um, there was a transfer for learning support services or special education to move some funds from the summer part-time account to contract services. This was in order to pay for contracted services that the, the department has ordered. I don't ha, I can't tell you specifically what the services were, but, uh, we do, uh, hire services for things like transportation, uh, I think for some therapy services and the like, so something similar to that. There was fun, there were funds remaining in the part-time teacher account from last summer, uh, so those funds were used to address expenses that, uh, were exceeding the budget for contract services.
Okay, so it was from last summer?
Yes, that's correct. It would not affect this coming year.
Okay.
Or this coming term.
Um, okay, so that, that clarifies that for me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Uh, good evening. Uh, may you point out again for me on this report where we stand with the, uh, anticipated unexpendable fund balance for the current year?
Um, Mr. Jordan, I, the, we don't have a report specifically that indicates, uh, projections. I can tell you, because you'd asked a similar question last month, and I believe I indicated I'd, uh, try to have something available, uh, or provide you more information. Earlier this year, we had projected that the, uh, wage and benefit accounts had approximately a $20 million surplus, uh, in the general fund. This was largely because of vacancies, uh, and also there's a lot, there is some turnover where more senior teachers were budgeted and newer teachers were hired, so their pay was different. So we did, we are accruing or projecting to, um, to have savings of $20 million. The, uh, bonus that we just, um, paid to employees at the beginning of this month was $10.7 million is what was charged to the general fund. This is a little more than we had, had projected earlier, primarily because we chose to, uh, pay for the Title I and special, and, uh, Title 6B, uh, teachers and staff from the general fund rather than from the grants. Uh, both, both of those, uh, projects had, uh, spending plans in place, and we were concerned about, um, the ability to cover future expenses, so we paid those from the general fund. So $10.7 million of the, uh, projected surplus has been, um, has been paid to our employees in the form of bonuses. Uh, there are a few other transfers for, uh, for spending that was not included in our fiscal '23 budget, uh, that we had planned to, uh, to use with, um, the, uh, excess salary and benefit fund, so that, that'll whittle it around, uh, away a little bit. At this point, uh, it looks like we have about a $7.5 million surplus in the salary accounts before addressing accruals that would take place at the end of the year. The accruals are generally where a person works, uh, in June, but gets paid in July, uh, so those costs will be accrued back into the previous year. So we started with about $20 million. We have paid, uh, $10.7, uh, for the bonuses. Uh, there are a few other, um, expenses that we need to pay, for example, uh, moving the Easton school staff and, and, uh, equipment to the Fairline facility where they will be located in September. So those, um, those have brought down the surplus a little bit.
Okay, so just, if at the, if at the next meeting we can get a little more details on the, that 2.5 million or so that you're just mentioning, um, as far as you, the example you used was Easton, so just wanted to get some clarity on what you're already projecting to, um, to use the, the surplus for. So, not asking for that now, but it's thinking something we need to make sure we're, we're familiar with as a, as a board. And also, um...
Uh, Mr. Jordan, they will be reported to you, um, in the form of the budget transfers, so, uh, some of those will appear on the April report.
Right. I guess my point is that since the board voted to make the, um, the adjustments to support the move to Easton and what some of these other items may be, that I think it would be helpful if we were apprised of what you're anticipating using the funds for versus us seeing what's been done after...
Okay.
...the, the spending has taken places, is what I'm suggesting. And, um, to that point, then, with the projected 7.5 million, if the board continues to move forward with what I understand the, the agreement with the city, then 7 point, then $3 million of that 7.5 million is also being, um, I guess allocated, maybe the right word, um, to support the, the city school construction plan?
I, I also need to point out that this is just wages and benefits, which are most of our budget. There are generally savings in other accounts as well, so that's, I'm not, I have not projected the, the full, um, the full surplus or the full, um, just exactly how we'll end up. But you're correct, we had, uh, the, the plan that you did approve, or the board approved for next year's capital did include $3 million of reversion funds for the capital budget. That, that is correct.
That's the budget that we approved, that we submitted to City Council. We still have our final vote, correct?
That's correct. We're waiting for, uh, council to, to, um, take their, their action, and when, and then at that point, we'll bring something back to you.
Okay, so, um, thank you, thank you for that update. Madam Chair, I just wanted to, um, express that, um, I had sent a request to do a two-by-two, uh, prior to the board acting on the, on our, on our final budget, and I'd still like to do that if, uh, if you're available to, to join me and, and have that two-by-two, so that we can be on top of this as we are dealing with, um, these unexpendable funds. And then I, then I have one question that I'd like the board to consider having Attorney Cloud review for us. With the unexpendable funds and the fact that we have to do these annual, annual budgets, I'd just like to get an understanding of to what extent the current school board can, um, uh, encumber or can, uh, say to future school boards how they can utilize unexpendable funds. So in essence, as we talked about before, as I understand the recommendation before us, we are suggesting that at least $3 million a year for the next 10 years of unexpendable fund balance would be used for something. And I just wanted to make sure that as a school board, we truly have the power and authority now to, uh, bind a future board when they're considering such things as unexpendable fund balances. So, thank you.
We have not voted on that.
So, or we could have...
Go ahead, and then Ms. Bassin.
All right, thank you, uh, Dr. Martin. Um, and I'll, I'll just, before I jump into my other one, my question to you, I'll just, uh, to the question that my colleague, uh, raised, um, we're preparing a five-year strategic plan, um, which, um, will lay out five years of a plan for us. And essentially, if I'm not mistaken, what we voted on with the capital improvement plan is just that a plan. Um, and I think I've even mentioned it, that every year, it would be required by law that the board still has to take action on a vote. So it's not a binding, it's actually a plan, so that we have guidance for future boards or whoever may be here for continuity, so they may be able to see what we decided on. And if such time, the board decides that they don't want to go there, the board has the authority to vote and go somewhere else. And I think that's correct, Mr. Cloud, right? They have to vote in every year?
I, I believe so, but I will be happy to...
They'll go back and look.
...look into it in detail and respond back to you and Mr. Jordan.
Definitely. But my other piece on that one, um, to Mr. Jenkins, um, we're waiting on council to, to finalize their budget there, but also, if I'm not mistaken, we're also waiting on the state. Uh, the state has not completed their budget, correct?
That, that is correct. We are waiting from the state, uh, your capital, the capital improvement plan that you endorsed and that we were, uh, sent over to, to, uh, City Council included 10 point, all over $10 million of state funds for construction. Um, that is not included in the House budget. I don't believe it's included, I don't believe the current governor is recommending it. It is in the Senate budget. We are hopeful that something will emerge that is positive, uh, in the area of capital, uh, but it's certainly not assured. So we know that there will be adjustments to our capital budget, especially if the $10 million is not included.
Is not included. But we may even potentially have to adjust, I mean, it's still out there that there may even be a decrease. I mean, we, in the projections, potential.
We don't, at this point, you're absolutely correct. We do not have a state budget, uh, so we're not, we, we do not know exactly what our state funding will be.
Uh, State Delegate Cliff Hayes wrote an article on Monday in the Virginian Pilot, um, talking about the disparities that we're experiencing at the state level regarding its funding. Um, so just as much as what we have a plan that we submitted over, um, and I don't want individuals to feel like anything's laying on deaf ears, um, we're in a very uncertain ti, time right now. Um, we have a new governor, um, we have a General Assembly that's at odds within the parties, and we don't know what the state numbers are going to look like, and we have a certain amount of time, um, to get those. I think maybe a couple of years back, we've ever been this close, where we may potentially be going into May or even June and not having that assurance of what those numbers are going to look like.
I think we have been as late as in June. Uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, something will be earlier, um, but that, again, that is between the Senate and the House.
Got it. And we can't put out contracts until we know what we've got, right?
Um, I would have to defer to Mr. Cloud. I, I, generally, you need a budget in order to issue contracts.
I don't think you can, I mean, unless there was some state action that would...
State action, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, ju, just for clarity, what, what my colleague, Mr. Clanton, was, was stating in terms of the plan versus, was actually what I'm seeking clarity on, because in my, in my communication, what... Because in my, in my communication, what I understood was that, um, was that the school administration with the authority of the school board had entered into an agreement that said that based upon what our past years' unexpendable fund balances have been, that we committed ourselves to the $3 million in the future. That's what I'm trying to get clarity on. Is it something that's just a plan on the books? Or is it something that we have somehow committed ourselves to? And that's what I'm trying to get clarity-
So what I recall was that it was a recommendation made by, um, our city manager in discussion. But I have not, I did not interpret that in any way that we've committed to that yet. Am I incorrect? Am I-
That's why I asked for the two by two.
Well, I think it was back in October that the plan was presented and we provided the information about the $3 million, $3 million for conversion funds. I believe it, at that time it was for the 10-year period of time. So we, we did discuss that as a governance team and the board did support us moving forward with plans for the city. And so that's, that's what we have done. I'm not a legal expert, but I would think that certainly it's our plan. And if another board decides that they don't want to support the plan, it will just impact, um, funding for new buildings and renovations and, and things of that nature.
I, I, the reason I remember this and the reason I, I'm, I'm thinking when I'm, that we did not commit these because I actually don't agree with earmarking $3 million of our budget. Which is, we, we create our budget based on our needs. And so essentially it's kind of hamstringing us to this $3 million and to make sure that we don't use $3 million, which I think is, goes against the, the values of our budget.
I would say that we do have surpluses, we have historically, but we don't, we certainly don't budget to have surpluses. They come not because of anything planned. We don't plan to have vacancies, we don't plan to have turnover at the point that we do. We sometimes plan for projects to occur that get delayed, uh, spillover into the next year. Things happen and we don't spend as much as we had, um, as we had planned. We have a long history of that, so, um, I'm fairly confident it will happen. We can't promise that.
Right.
Uh, and we have no authority to, uh, enter into an agreement with, when I say we, the administration has no authority to enter into an agreement with the city and we have not. We made a pro- a proposal to you, um, the board collectively approved it and we forwarded it to the City Council for, as a, uh, request for appropriation.
Yeah, I just, I know my, the thoughts that I'm, I, I, we haven't discussed this, but, but my thought about it, it was that, um, I would rather the, um, I would rather the $3 million or whatever the number ends up being to be, um, budgeted outright. I wouldn't want to make a decision for 10 years. I think every year we should continue to reevaluate and vote on how that fund is being used based on need. It seems like the, you know, the fiscally responsible thing to do to me. Did you have any, is there anything else to say?
No, please.
Well, I have another, I have other questions, but are you done with your-
Did you have something to say, Dr. Britson?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. I don't know, didn't, was Mr. Jordan?
Are you, did you have anything to add?
No ma'am, thank you.
And we'll schedule the two by two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So following up as well, so on the quarterly grant status report, do you have, uh, a, a report that, that shows exactly, you know, like what, uh, what items are being spent under, um, each of the funds?
Certainly we have information that indicates how we're spending our funds and we do report that to the, um, the funding agent as we get reimbursed. So certainly, of course, we do.
Okay. Is, is that something that, um, could be provided to the board?
I, I guess if we know specifically what it is you would like us to provide to you. In many cases, there are thousands of budget lines that underlie some of these grants.
Okay.
And I, we're, we're trying to, to balance between feeding you too much data and giving you something that's informative for which you can make decisions.
Right, I understand. Well, specifically around the CARES Act and the ARPA funding, um, there, I believe around this time last year, there was, you know, a, a report that was provided that had indicated what, uh, this, the funds were being used for. And for me, it was helpful to see, um, how it might impact the budget, the current budget and future budgets. If there are items, for instance, you know, I use the health and PE assistance, 11 PE assistance that last year, I believe, of, uh, were under the CARES Act.
Correct, I believe you're, I believe they were under the original CARES Act, yes.
So this year, they're, for, for this upcoming school year, they're within our current operating budget.
They're migrating to the general fund.
So how those, how that spending could then impact the budget, I think is important for us to monitor.
I mean, I don't have-
Especially from a sustainability standpoint, um, so-
And that's a good point, um, Mrs. Bassin. That was the primary reason we took those PE assistance off of this grant so that we could sustain them over time. So that was the primary reason for that. And we did share that with the board. We didn't think that it would be a permanent decision, but we, we knew the importance of having that additional social emotional support in place for kids. And so it was placed in, um, within the grant funds. And this year, or next year, we're going to transition it over to the operating fund. So we can sustain it.
Right, and I would also add that our budget, uh, for that first CARES Act was $12,794. I'm just reading off of page 16. We've spent or encumbered $12,475. There is about $319,000, some of that is private school money. So we have spent, um, 97.5% of that budget. So there certainly are no funds available to carry that program over into the new year.
Right, right. And, and I appreciate that, but I guess my question is, are there other items like that or resources that we have, uh, allocated under those funds that then, you know, are items that we know are going to be necessary for, for years to come?
Our grant, our grants folks are working with the project managers in each of those. I mean, the, for instance, the ARPA funds have been divided up among the individual program managers and they work very closely with the group if there are funds that are available. We have demands, uh, for alternate uses, so we, we certainly would, um, reallocate those. All within the constraints provided by the grantor, by the granting legislation.
Okay. Well, I, I certainly don't want to ask for the administration to run reports simply for running reports with long, you know, expenditure lists, but I think some high-level, um, review of the areas that are, are being included under each of those funds would be, would be helpful. And I see you have done that, that with the art funds here in the, in the grant, uh, report. But I think it would be helpful to have more of a description, um, for, for our budgetary planning and resource allocation.
If that's the board's preference, I'm sure we can, can work on that.
Let's talk about that offline. I, I mean, I don't, what, like what level you want? I don't, or maybe we can put it on, talk about it in our work session. Dr. Martin, if Ms. Bassin would like to share with the board via email the specific request that she has regarding the high level, happy to provide input and to know if that would be something that the board would, um, rally behind.
Yeah, I just don't think right now is the time to have that discussion. So if you don't mind doing that, that'd be great.
I, and I, well, I ha- I have put it in an email, but, um-
But it was addressed to me, I think, instead of the board.
So the board can hash it out?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the financial.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
A second?
Thank you, Dr. Alson. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
I, friendly amendment to that motion, uh, vote to stop the financial report, subject to audit. Just for legal purposes, but aye.
Go ahead.
Clanton?
Aye.
You said aye.
Aye, okay. Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, up next we have the Valben Group Governance Training Contract. Can I get a motion to accept the Valben Group Governance Training Contract?
Madam Chair, I move for approval.
Can I get a second, please?
Aye, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that, um, the Valben Group is, uh, a very high-performing, uh, organization with a lot of experience dealing with, uh, working at the operational level and supporting administrations and school divisions with strategic planning and equity. And, um, and I applaud their work in, in that regard. In terms of the, the RFQ that was created and the process that we went through, I'm not comfortable with that process and I'm not, I don't believe that the, um, response really speaks to the governance training that I believe we need. I will not be voting in support of the, the contract, but I appreciate the fact that we're trying to, um, do something around governance. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Dr. Martin?
Yes, go ahead.
As I've shared, uh, previously with the board, I have similar sentiments and will also, uh, not be voting in support of, uh, this contract.
Okay. Anyone else?
Dr. Martin, as the maker of the motion, um, we've been through an exhaustive process. This actually came up back in December, much more extensive than we have for our two governor, two other prior governance training, um, groups that have come before this board. I think that we've gone through a process that followed the law, that followed the script of what we needed to do. And I think that the Valben Group, after having spoken with them and participating in the actual closed session that we had, um, in our last work session, and actually fulfilling and participating in that conversation, I think that they will add value to the overall board in what we need to do as far as governance training. So I'll be voting in approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Tanner, please call a question.
Bassin?
Nay.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Rousen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. Up next we have the Norfolk Health and Wellness Center letter to City Council. And, um, I'd like to get a motion to accept the Norfolk Health and Wellness Center request for a competitive pool, um, at the Norfolk Health and Wellness Center on Newport Avenue.
Dr. Martin, um, I would like to bring forth a motion, uh, to accept the letter written on behalf of the school board for the support of a competition swimming pool at the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, Dr. Martin.
Okay.
So I know this came up at the, I think at our work session. And what I was anticipating was that we were going to receive some type of presentation 'cause to be honest with you, I'm not, uh, familiar with, uh, all this being involved with the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center, um, plans and how that relates to, uh, North Public Schools. I see the, the letter that you've written, um, you know, one time we also were trying to look at, um, when we approved, uh, South Side STEM and Swim, we were also trying to provide some connectivity between, uh, the STEM Academy and, um, and some of our swimming and hopefully one day competitiveness. I'm, I'm just not real clear on what it is that, um, that we're doing with this letter. I don't know if there's a specific timeline associated with it, but I think if, if it's something that the board is going to be endorsing, then the board should have some type of presentation on what it is that's being considered so the board can be informed on what it is that it's endorsing. And I don't, I know, I haven't seen it, I don't know if other board members have seen it, but I know we have not received a presentation. We haven't had any feedback from the administration on this. I just think that the first step would be to get a presentation and then the second step would be then to endorse something based upon what we've learned. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel. Mr. Jordan, I thank you for your feedback. This letter, um, which I'm very happy to have the opportunity, um, to, uh, write on behalf of the board, merely stems from a conversation with regards to the feedback that the city has solicited from all stakeholders with regards to what they, uh, would like to see as a vision for the, the Wellness Center. They're going to be going through a massive reconstruction of that area. As a school division, uh, we have, uh, competitive swim teams. And it would be beneficial, um, for us to have an additional swimming pool there dedicated for competition swimming. At the South Side STEM Academy, which is a beautiful, well, the Aquatic Center, which is a beautiful facility and is used by our schools to practice in, there is differences in water temperature, lanes, and then sometimes you can have conflicts with therapeutic, uh, aquatics. And so the timeframe is one of that, that we're very early in the process. I, I said we, but it's they, um, the city is very early in the process of receiving feedback for, uh, what stakeholders would like for this Wellness Center. I believe that there is some type of master plan that the area of, um, parks and recreation will have, uh, presented in May, but that's not technically, you know, it's not necessarily concrete. This letter just merely serves to advocate on behalf of our students and our school division to say, if you would consider a competition swimming pool, we would greatly appreciate that.
Thank, thank you. I mean, just so you know, and, and we've talked about this some time ago, I'm in support of the city having, uh, competition swimming pool. I'm just saying, and I didn't know that you drafted a letter, so thank you for your, for your effort there. I'm just saying, I don't know enough, for example, in the letter it references the Norfolk Silver Dolphins and Lionfish Swimming Pool. I don't have any familiarity with that. I don't know where we are in terms of the, our competitive swim, swim teams as a district and what the capacity is and what we're, so I, I want to be clear. I'm not saying that I am not supportive of trying to encourage the city to provide what I think is an important amenity. I just feel at a disadvantage not having the benefit of the presentation, frankly, not participating in whatever the surveys were, um, in order to be, have this like a, an official endorsement from the, from the school board. That's all. So thank you, but I appreciate your, your clarity.
Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Yeah, yeah, um, I too, I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea of this, but as I, I think I, I mentioned when this was initially raised, um, at the work session, I think it's important for us to get a full proposal, especially if we're, if we're advocating on behalf of the needs of our students. I think having a full understanding of what that need is, like, what are, what are our needs? Like, do we, you know, where do our, like, right now for me, you know, I'm unfamiliar with, um, you know, where our students do swim. You know, it is, I think that would be helpful. How many students? What do we, what are we, what is our current utilization? And what do we, what will we like to see? Not just for swimming, but then what about other sports? And so I think having a real, you know, again, here with the big picture of what our students' needs are, I think is important. And I understand that, that right now, the, the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center, they're actually working on that piece right now. But, you know, for instance, I could, you know, there's potential opportunity for, um, you know, lots of other shared use, uh, aspects of that facility that we aren't addressing in this letter. So for me, I think it's important that we have the administration, uh, work on bringing forward a proposal and a recommendation for our support, uh, you know, to offer our support to the city. And just to take this piece alone seems, um, you know, for me, I don't, I, I don't feel like I have a full understanding of what that need is. So it, it seems a little premature.
Dr. Martin?
Go ahead.
I appreciate the effort, definitely, and I inquired a little bit more about it. And just to that point, do we have students that attend Granby High School? Yes. Do we have students who are at Granby High School or competitive swimmers? Yes. Does Granby High School, like Maury High School, have a swimming pool? No. And so, the most logical space next to it would be the center, and if the city is in the process of planning and consideration and building all those things around that, then why not put a voice in there to say, hey, this will benefit our students as well as benefit the overall community. I don't need necessarily a full plan today, but I need to be able to plant a seed to let the city know that this is important and it will benefit our students. So, I appreciate the effort of the letter. I think that it's in a good spirit to be able to say, yes, city, please consider how this will affect and be able to support our students. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're supposed to be here doing, what's going to help our kids. And if we're talking about it across the city, it shouldn't be fair when we talk about kids coming from one side of the city having to go all the way over. Remember, we had eight years of students at Booker T. Washington High School who had to go and play at a baseball stadium and another softball field. This is another opportunity of that. If the city's going to put investment into the aquatic system and to this new center, then do the same thing. Give those students at Granby High School and the surrounding community an opportunity to place a competitive swimming pool in that area. So, I'm going to vote for it.
It's Granby High School, Granby Elementary, Northside.
The entire community.
Suburban acres, yeah.
Dr. Martin, well, to that point, then, Granby doesn't have a soccer field. I mean, so, you know what I mean? It's like a domino effect. You know, we're talking about, you know, we have schools that don't have functioning tennis courts, that don't have, you know, so, and I understand, again, that right now, the city is working on that particular facility in that area, but it's like, right now, I mean, to bring it up in a business meeting, I think, again, it's premature. I would like to see what the full needs are of our students, so that we can, if we are going to advocate, then why not advocate for all of the things that are lacking at Granby Elementary, you know, in that zone versus just a swimming pool. So...
I will say, just in response to that, it's because they're, the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center doesn't have the capacity to really have, meet all of the needs that we would want to evaluate for the Granby, you know, the surrounding schools. This is one particular area, you know, and again, it's just, they have been asking for community feedback, and so, this is to start a conversation. I mean, we really don't have the luxury of time at this point to do a full evaluation of all of the needs of Granby High School and then have it be fit into this plan, because they're going to vote on it probably within the next month. So, that's why we just wanted to be narrowly focused on one thing that we know is lacking for those students in that area, that could potentially, because there is an in-ground pool there, be an opportunity to fill.
Right. And I appreciate your explanation, but already, in your explanation, you clearly have a lot more knowledge about what the plans are for that facility and that area that I don't have. And so, if you're asking me to support and endorse a letter of support, I would like to have the same level of understanding that you or anyone else has about that facility, about the facility plan. So, you know...
I have a question. Ms. Basin, did you receive the email that was sent to Norfolk residents with regards to what you would like to share as far as feedback with the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center?
Did I receive the email? I did.
Yeah, that's the information that we have, that they're soliciting feedback.
But, but how do you know that they don't have, like, for instance, she, if I heard you correctly, commenting in your comments, saying that they don't have the capacity to meet all of the needs of, you know, extracurriculars of students in that area. I did not get that from that survey request.
I'm not speaking to that. All I know is that there is a area of critical input that is needed. We, as an elected body, can provide that input on behalf of our students. It will benefit all of our students. It really doesn't have to be subjected just to Granby High School. All students can go and do swim classes. Families can do swim classes. Everyone will benefit. So, the question is, are we going to put forth an effort? And maybe this can bring a springboard for other efforts for advocacy, as we've done so in the past. I don't see what the harm is in sending a letter to say, please consider a competition swimming pool as you reimagine what the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center will be. I don't see a problem in that. I see that as advocacy, which is what we're here to do.
We are, and, you know, along those lines, if, well, we could spend all night, because if we're talking about advocacy, I would love to see us have a joint meeting with City Council to talk about how we can holistically address community violence. I mean, if there's anything that we should be advocating for and getting behind, like yesterday, that would be, that would be my top priority. So, you know, here we are, we're having a discussion in a business meeting of an item that was raised as a future agenda item at the last work session. I believe this is a work session topic. And again, I am not opposed to having a swimming pool. I would love to have our students have access to a whole host of things, but I think that there's a process that we, as a governance team, should follow, and that's what I'd like to see. So, that's it. I want to belabor the topic.
Thank you. We've exhausted, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner, and please call the question.
Basin?
No.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Ralston?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. All right, with that, I want to thank everyone for their time.
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry, you know what? I'm looking at the online agenda. Sorry. We do have two more things. Okay. Ms. Basin had asked for the minutes to be moved, so I would, well, first, can I get a, can I get a motion to adopt the minutes?
Just have her state her corrections first.
Okay, go ahead and state your corrections. Why did you have?
Overall, I would like both, well, I was going to request that they be reexamined for accuracy and completeness and to bring it back to the next business meeting.
Point of inquiry, Madam Chair, can my colleague point out a place where there needs to be a change in accuracy?
Would you do that, please? Let us know what seems to be inaccurate.
Well, there's just incomplete statements that are in there throughout both. I'm not going to sit and go through right now each correction. I don't think that would be appropriate, but...
No, in order for me to take under consideration, as your colleague on the board, can you give me an example where there's inaccuracies in the minutes of the record?
I have some recommendations, if you would consider. Not necessarily inaccuracies, but I think could provide additional clarity. So, for example, in the minutes that includes the work session, so we list...
Date, could you?
On March 2nd.
March 2nd, I'm doing the first one. So, on the March 2nd one, one of the things that I think is good is that we identify who the speakers were. We don't identify whether or not they spoke on a particular topic. I'm not saying that we have to give a prose or long description on what was said, but since it is a public hearing, that being able to identify what the speakers addressed, I think, would be an important part of the minutes. So, right now, if you go to, I can't find the page, but in any event, because of the way we did the meeting, if you recall, the minutes accurately show that we were receiving a presentation on the budget, and I think we switched to the public hearing, then we came back to the budget, and you'll find that the minutes do identify the individuals that spoke. One of the things that caught my attention, as I said a moment ago, is we didn't identify what they spoke about. That's also the case in the, in the minutes from the business meeting. And then, there are some other areas in both cases where I think there just may have been some misunderstandings around what was said. So, what I would ask if the board would consider it is if you would like to have more input on where there's some concerns. It was kind of hard with the holiday to do it for, in time for this meeting, but would be more than happy to go through and submit areas of clarity for consideration for the board to adopt the minutes during the May meeting.
Oh, Madam Chair, if I may. I don't object to my colleague's recommendation about public speakers, listing the names and at least the topics that they're speaking about, but if I may ask our clerk, our clerk, you do these minutes, and if my understanding, how are you recording? Are you looking back at the videos or anything?
Sometimes I do go back for clarity.
It's the responsibility of the clerk to provide an official record, though I appreciate my colleague offering the opportunity. I do under, when was this posted? Was this posted before you all went on spring break?
On Monday.
This is on Monday. Okay. So, you know, I have no problem, I think, Mr. Jordan, if you're going to send an email and say, hey, can I highlight here and we share it with the board, and then we just defer this to our next meeting to bring it back. I'm cool with it.
Yeah, and I was only offering that in response to your question about, could you point some things out? So, if that's something that the board would like done, I can do that, but I agree with you that, you know, I was trying, I don't want to put the, I know how difficult it is in our meetings for the clerk to try to capture everything, but I do think if I'm being represented in a certain way, or if something isn't complete, then I feel like I've got a responsibility to offer that clarity, and I don't think that Ms. Tanner, or any clerk for that matter, can always grasp what each of us is saying. So, that was why I was offering to provide that clarification based upon the question that you asked.
So, for the Wednesday, March 16th meeting, can you, can we go through that? Can you tell me what, or tell us what areas you would like to focus on for revisions?
Well, it was similar, so I'm pulling up my laptop died, so I don't have all my notes in front of me. I'm going off of this one. But, as I mentioned, similar with the public comment, and then some of the discussion that we were having around, I think it was the approval of the budget, I think there were just some sentences or statements that were truncated. And so, just to have clarity and accuracy, I think there's an opportunity to provide that feedback. Like I said, as Ms. Tanner said, she, because of the holiday, and I understood that we probably wouldn't get it until Monday, but it just also made it hard for me to get a chance to provide the feedback.
So, Madam Chair, if there, just for the time's sake here, I don't think that we'll be able to approve the minutes tonight, but I'd like to just, without objection, move that we postpone the adoption of our minutes pending some recommendations for corrections to the, our May meeting.
Okay. Any objection?
Objection.
Okay, so we'll move these to the May meetings for approval. But in the meantime, they'll be revised, and we'll review them.
And for clarity, who are the individuals providing clarification for March 2nd and March 16th board meeting? Who is going to send that via email?
So, I volunteered to offer my input, because I have some input. I can't speak for how others may do theirs.
I will do the same, yeah.
Yeah, and if they just be shared to the board.
Absolutely.
And then, yep.
All right, thank you, everyone.
And then also, if I may ask a question, Dr. Martin, when it comes to public comments for board meetings, from, since we started doing it from until now, we just always just had the individuals' names. I did not get into sharing what they spoke about, so if we're going to shift from that, just let me know when you guys vote on that.
This topic? Okay. I mean, it is true that some come in and talk about multiple concerns, but if you could just do your best to, just a brief topic, I wouldn't want...
And we also have a link that's a part of the minutes, so they can click back and look at the agenda and go look at that particular meeting and see everything. They can click on that section to see exactly what people are talking about.
Okay, that's good information.
It's lost information.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't mind, I honestly am fine with the names. I'm trying to go with the consensus, so do we, I want to understand from everyone else, would you like to continue with the current practice of having the link there with the names listed, or should Ms. Tanner include the topic, try to guess at what the topic is in many cases of the discussion?
Again, I don't want to belabor time here, but if I can ask Mr. Attorney Cloud, for the official record, are the names of public speakers required?
No, I mean, there is no detailed requirement with regard to the minutes. You would not necessarily have to include the names.
So, the clerk providing a link so that the public could go back and watch, that could be sufficient enough?
Yeah, that has been.
Okay.
So, I would like to propose that we continue as we have with the, with the link. So, where does, so anyone agree or disagree with me?
I think...
Continue with the link.
I'm indifferent. I would, it's, there's a link that's there, that's real time. You can watch the speakers. It's documented, it's archived. It's transparent.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think for an in-depth overview of what speakers spoke about, I think that's helpful, but I think, like, for instance, and I'm just using tonight as an example, like, you know, paying compensation, you know, just using that, just, you know, briefly identifying what the topic was, I think is helpful from a, you know, a quick, because sometimes I just like to look and read and see what action items versus watching the, you know...
I think tonight, though, was, is, we had the benefit of, most of the people were speaking on the same topic, and that doesn't always happen. I think it could be very cumbersome for Ms. Tanner to have to go through all of them.
You know what? I don't think we should include topics, because then we put a necessary burden on our clerk. And I do recall in previous meetings, there's been some parents that have come in and spoken about their children, special education concerns, different things, and I honestly do not want to put that burden on Ms. Tanner to determine what is appropriate and not appropriate, and what is considered a generalized topic. There's a video, it's there. If we didn't have the benefit of the video, I would say, okay, let's try to get some type of a rubric in place, but for the time being, I would say, let's just keep with the video.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, the consensus is to remain with the link, but, you know, and to everyone else, this might sound silly that we're talking about this, but we're constantly trying to have these discussions to rethink how we're conducting our meetings and some of our processes, so I appreciate your patience with us. Okay, all right. Up next, we have personnel. Again, Ms. Basin, you'd asked for this to be pulled out of the consent agenda, so please proceed.
Yes. I asked for it to be pulled from the consent agenda, because, you know, every month, when we receive the HR reports, for me, I feel personally accountable to the fact that we have two schools in particular that have, like Taylor High School and Southside STEM Academy, that have 16 and 15 vacancies in those schools, which, you know, undoubtedly has impact on the students in those schools. And for me, month after month, seeing those vacancies, I feel like at some point, we have to take accountability and also take some action, because it's April. And to my knowledge, you know, I want to see some creative solutions put in place. I want to start seeing higher, you know, us, if we have to, you know, I want to see us hiring individuals to go into the schools, and tonight, there was, if I recall correctly, and I reviewed it over and over, there were no hires for those schools. And to me, that's problematic, and I want the board to take some action, to ask the administration to really look at, and I know that they're working hard on trying to fill those seats, but, you know, we've talked about putting teachers in schools that they don't, may not want to be in, but I think we have to think about doing something like that. I mean, we have, I mean, it's not okay that our kids are in schools with that number of vacancies, and I know we all agree on that, but we have... of vacancies, and I know we all agree on that, but we have to take some action on that.
Well, we, I'm trying to figure out where to start, because this is obviously an ongoing struggle that's happening nationwide, and it's hitting home right now with this conversation. There have been three, more than three job fairs in the past two months, three months? So, again, I agree with you, our administration is working very hard to recruit very highly-qualified people for these positions, and, I mean, do you have something to recommend? I'm just, I want to understand, what are you, what are you looking for the board to do at this time, when you say to get creative?
To get creative, or, you know, asking for veteran teachers to go to work in those schools? You know, I know all of our schools have some vacancy, but, you know, there are some districts that are assigning teachers to the schools that have been hard to staff, and I know that's an unpopular strategy, but, I mean, is it okay to be in the month of April with that number of vacancies in a school? I mean, we just, we kind of have to ask ourselves that question at some point, that, you know, are, you know, is that the strategy that we're missing that maybe we should consider?
Dr. Birdsong, would you like to come on?
I would like to.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So the administration has been working hard with staffing. We've had several job fairs, and I want to thank our Human Resources Department for being proactive in trying to hire teachers throughout the year. As you know, if teachers are already contracted in another school division, they can't be contracted to come work with us at this time, so that's not a possibility. So we have to think outside of the box to, you know, to determine what is it that we can do to address some of the vacancies. And I know for certain, specifically at the Southside STEM, we have asked veteran teachers from our curriculum and instruction department to teach classes at the school, and so to imply that we've done nothing is, is, it's just not factual. We continue to, with the support of Dr. Doretha White, who now has an office over there at Southside STEM Academy, we are working hard to make sure that the children receive quality instruction, and so we're doing what we have to do to ensure that. It is devastating that nationwide, statewide, citywide, regional, regionally, that we have these issues, but we are doing the very best that we can with the resources that we have. And so I don't want our teachers who have been asked to go to Southside STEM to think that we don't acknowledge what they're doing and have done. I know we've had people from Korean Technical Education as well, that department, to teach classes at Southside STEM, so to imply that nothing is going on out there, it's outrageous, because there's plenty going on, and the children are receiving quality instruction.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the personnel docket. This conversation is not germane to the docket that is presented here tonight, so I move for adoption. I believe that it's an important conversation, but it's not for what we have here tonight.
I just wanted to give her a moment on explaining why it was pulled, and definitely for you.
I move that we accept the personnel docket.
Yeah, you need a second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yes, I do, and I think because my statements have been completely mischaracterized, I, as I stated, I know the administration, and the team is working hard to fill those seats, and yes, I do. I know, I have been at this school, I have seen Dr. White, I have seen Dr. Gibson, I have seen that team rally around the students. But what I am saying is, right now, we are pulling our resources from a variety of different departments, and I'm so grateful for that, but what, having, having teachers in that, in the school building on day one, and I know it's a national issue, but at some point, you know, we have to think, you know, of some other ways, other than what we're currently doing, to fill those classrooms, so that, you know, people in curriculum and instruction, and what, everybody can be doing the job that they are assigned to do, and that's what I'm asking, and for discussion, and that's what I'm advocating for. So, you know, we can agree to disagree. I think my comments have been totally mischaracterized, and I resent that, but you can go on with the vote.
So for my clarification, do you want veteran teachers in the classroom or not?
I want you to do whatever you think is necessary for our school district. That's what we want you to do, and I know that you are. Okay. Go ahead.
This doesn't have anything to do with the discussion that we just had, but it is pertinent to the personnel docket, and I had written these comments, thinking that they would be a part of the consent agenda, but sometimes we go through the motions of approving a consent agenda, including a personnel docket, and there's a lot of information in there, and I just wanted to highlight how proud I was of some of the members who are retiring with 30-plus years of experience. I saw a PE teacher with 44 years of experience, a program director with 30 years of experience, and that just is a testament of the dedication and excellent quality of staff that we have in Norfolk Public Schools, and to me, it's, it's very important that we just not kind of, and I know we don't just breeze through it, but let's, let's pay a tribute to that, and that happens at very, a lot of our personnel dockets. And then the second item is that, as also a part of our personnel docket, it's highlighted those members who have achieved their master's degrees, special certificates, reading certificates, gifted endorsements.
PhDs.
The what?
PhDs.
Exactly. We have a high school principal who just received her PhD, and so those are opportunities for celebration. I'm very proud of our staff, and I know that they work many jobs, we all do, but they're still doing these to continue their education for the benefit of the children and their staff, and to be role models, and I just wanted to point that out as a part of the personnel docket. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Just briefly, I think the point that Ms. Bassin was raising is tied to the additional reports that we receive that help, that are intended, I think, to help inform us when we are considering the personnel docket. What the public doesn't see that we see are those reports, and so at one time, when we thought it was appropriate to ask those questions in closed session, we did that, and we found that it wasn't appropriate. And so that's why these discussions sometimes come up during the personnel docket, because we don't, it's not, we don't have, we haven't yet, and maybe we will, had the opportunity to discuss some of these issues at a work session, so the only opportunity that we get to tie it is to the personnel docket. And what I understood Ms. Bassin to be raising, something that I share, is that I think whatever direction that we give to the superintendent needs to be a board's direction with the superintendent's input, so that we're all on this as part of a team, but if the research, and we often talk about research, but we don't necessarily review it as much as I think we should, if at the bottom line, if we're saying as a division, whether we're talking about the cornerstone of a probably diverse community, or whether we're talking about equity and opportunity, is who are the individuals who are standing before our students delivering instruction? And if our data shows us that in some of the same campuses where we're having the most challenges in terms of student outcomes, are also the same campuses where we're having challenges with the, filling vacancies with qualified, certified, well-paid, healthy instructors? I think that is why we exist, and so I just want to make sure that, I didn't think that Ms. Bassin was trying to in any way malign anyone, I don't think she was particularly trying to target a particular campus, she was just looking at it, use an example, but in Norfolk, I don't care what the national data says, what the statewide data says, we have an ongoing issue that at some point in time, we have to figure out how to address, and I just thought Ms. Bassin was trying to bring our refocus to that for us as we, as we're moving forward, whether it deals with the budget, or whether it deals with our strategies going forward, and our accountability plan speaks to it, so it's all within that context, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Tanner, please call the question of adoption of the personnel docket.
Bassin?
Nay.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Ralson?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. All right, here we are, again. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.